Is there a motion for the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Sorry.
Okay, current of first from councillor Hamilton and a second from councillor Slater. And any further discussion? All right, all in favor of accepting the consent calendar as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And again, anyone watching, always nice information in work session where people can look for more detail on those. Number five is public comment. Do we have any public comment this evening? We have no, right? No public comment this evening? That will take us to number six, which is a public hearing. And number six is a public hearing for resolution number three, three, one. I also know that.
Three, seven.
So, public hearing approval to increase maximum indebtedness of the North Bend Urban Renewal Plan, resolution three, three, seven. You know, we have our finance director here and we also have our attorney online, or we have Lori Cooper, who is our attorney this evening.
Hello.
Oh. All right, this is the time set for a public hearing for approval to increase the maximum indebtedness of the North Bend Urban Renewal Plan, resolution three, three, seven, one. At this time, we'll open the hearing. I'm going to ask the councillors if there's any conflicts of interest or expertise contacts to report. Seeing none, I will ask now the staff to present the reports.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is the public hearing prior to resolution thirty-three, seventy-one, which is approval to increase the maximum indebtedness of the North Bend Urban Renewal Plan. This is for your concurrence with that, and the public hearing is purposes for you to garner input from the public on their views, for you to have that information to help you make decisions.
Thank you. After the staff's report, I will now move to public testimony portion of the public hearing. Written testimony has been entered into the record and provided to members of the council and staff. There is a time limit of three minutes per speaker, and each speaker must state their name and address for the record. If there is anyone wishing to speak in favor of the approval to increase maximum indebtedness of the North Bend Urban Renewal Plan, is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll now close the public testimony portion. Do any members of the council have any additional questions about this matter for staff? Seeing none, if there's no further discussion, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and it will now entertain a motion. I move the city council to approve resolution number three, three, seven, one, which proposes an increase in the maximum indebtedness of the North Bend Urban Renewal Plan from eleven million eight hundred thousand seven hundred thirty dollars to forty-five million five hundred thousand dollars. I heard, and I know we have a word to put here online as well, but I heard it first from our councillor Jones, and now I'll be looking for a second, correct? Is there a second?
Yes.
All right, I have a second from councillor Lyndon Torres, our first, our second. And I can ask if there's any further discussion? And if there's none, then all in favor to move the city council approved resolution, resolution number three, three, seven, one, which is, which proposes an increase in the maximum indebtedness of the North Bend Urban Renewal Plan from eleven million eight hundred and eight hundred thousand seven hundred twenty-three dollars to forty-five million five hundred thousand dollars, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. So. Does that complete agenda item number seven?
I believe so.
Yes, how much you even move on to the next, which allows you to jump to number eight.
Okay, number eight on the agenda is a public hearing resolution for three, three, seven, two, to approval of a public building project for the North Bend Urban Renewal. Three, three, seven, two. So I'll go ahead and move into the public hearing portion, approval of a public building project for the North Bend Urban Renewal Plan, resolution three, three, seven, two. This is that time for a public hearing for approval of the project plan. And at this time, I will open the hearing. I'll ask the councillors if there are any conflicts of interest or expertise contacts to report.
Boom.
Here it is, seeing none, the staff, please present their reports.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, resolution thirty-three, seventy-two is before you tonight for your concurrence to include a public building project within the scope of the North Bend Urban Renewal Plan, and so that allows for public facilities to be included within the scope of work that would be done within any potential buildings. So that's what's before you tonight. The purpose of the public hearing is to hear from the public on their views, so you can have that information as you make your decisions.
All right. Well, we'll now open the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Written testimony has been entered into the record and provided to the members of the council and staff. There is a three-minute time limit for speaker, and each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the approval of the public hearing or approval of a public building project for the North Bend Urban Renewal Plan? Is there anyone that was for, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? I will now close the public testimony portion. Do any members of the council have any additional questions about this matter for the staff? If there's no further discussion, I will close the public hearing at this time, and I will now entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution thirty-three, seventy-two, allowing a public building project to be included within the North Bend Urban Renewal Plan.
Second, first from councillor Slater and a second from councillor Schultz. Any further questions?
No questions, but I'm really, really pleased that we've gotten this far for both in the maximum indebtedness with our partners and for this addition. Because people might not be aware that our buildings are kind of at their max lifetime, got leaks and things, got a police department that's split, so I think this is a really needed addition, and I hope it works out. And it should, okay?
Right. Well, I heard first, a second, and who has some discussion? All in favor to move to approve resolution three, three, seven, two, allowing a public building project to be included within the North Bend Urban Renewal Plan, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. That took us through number?
Twelve.
Eleven.
Nine.
Right.
Twelve.
Ten.
Fourteen.
So number ten on the agenda is authorization to purchase a replacement diffusers for wastewater treatment plant digesters. Is there a motion from the council?
I move that the city council authorize the thirteen hundred replacement diffusers for the wastewater treatment plant digesters in the amount of twelve thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Thirty.
First from councillor Schultz and the second from councillor Slater. Um, discussions, any other discussion? I was thinking about the digesters and had this privy conversation last night, and so again, let's get into the work sessions. We had our first, first second, we had our discussion, all in favor for the city council to authorize a purchase of one thousand three hundred replacement diffusers for the wastewater treatment plant digesters. From, how do we say that, exis- zyland? Water solutions in the amount of twelve thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars, and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number eleven, is there a motion from the councillors on the digestion, destination of voting delegate for the League of Organs today's twenty twenty-five annual business meeting?
I'll move the city council designate Mayor York England Pete as the City of North Bend's voting delegate for the League of Cities twenty twenty-five annual business meeting.
Okay, second, first from councillor Hamilton and a second from councillor Schultz, any further discussion? All in favor for the city council to, to designate destiny. Mayor Eaglekey is the City of North Bend's voting delegate for the League of Organs Cities twenty twenty-five annual business meeting, they say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. That was number eleven on your agenda. Number twelve is any action from executive session, since we have none, that will go ahead and take us to your minister's report.
Thank you, Mayor Castle. The city minister's report has been posted online in our social media feed and sent out to the news media. Couple things I want to highlight. We had obviously a recent tsunami watch, I want to give good recognition to our fire chief, myself and the fire chief are the co-coordinators for the management team for emergency management. We, within minutes of the notification, had communicated with one another. We had, had it posted online, kept the public informed throughout the evening. Fortunately for us, there was nothing that came of it, which is always nice. It was a watch, we did not expect anything, but at the same time, you do take precautions. Also, as a education initiative, each day for the last two weeks, and I believe it'll continue to the fourteenth, we have social media information, just reminding folks that we are in a tsunami zone, invasion, just trying to re-educate them what to do, when to do, and how to do it. The library got real messy, not the library itself, but outside, they had their annual mistable or messy festival, and it was well attended this year. And I want to give a shout out, Public Works coordinates with the fire department and the library, they all come up, clean up after that mess. And they went through dozens and dozens of cans and shaving cream and like other things. The kennel for the new canine drug dog is mentioned on social media. It was a collaborative effort with multiple entities, all the way from the concrete to all the building materials. And so that is ready. I'm not going to hint beyond that, but I do happen to note that there is a dog involved, and it is down to one, and I'm sure that in September, the chief probably, with the team, will make some announcements, but we purchased a dog. Also, in Public Works, the Maple Leaf Housing Project, you may recall that, gosh, it was two years ago, I believe, that we got a designated line item in the legislative session for funding specific for infrastructure to move forward housing. And so our Public Works departments really worked closely with Maple Leaf. As I say, Maple Leaf B, not A, because when bills are done, we just did a switcheroo legally through business organ, but that project is down, done, all underground utilities are installed, the curb installation's underway, and the first tri-plop structure is fully framed, and the second is in the floor and the wall framing stage. So we should have twenty-four new housing units over the next two years because of that seed money. And if you recall, part of it was from Maple Leaf, the other was the Gloria Day. The Gloria Day project is still not moving forward as of yet. But we're still hopeful, and that's connectivity and extension on the side of Goose Bay. There's been quite a bit of activity out here with the visitor information center, you may see it. There will be a special ceremony and a special unveiling because you all kind of know about it, but you don't know about it. The reason I say kind of know about it is because I archive, I have a systematic way of archiving all photos I took, and I just happened to set some photos into the folder without realizing that when we put together certain documents, staff can grab those photos, and so one day, that photo actually appeared before you, and now no one asked about it. So it's a surprise to you too. And so I'm just going to make you hang in all that, because it's exciting, but it's going to connect tourism and our community and everything, and and vault duty to the city, which is even better. And last but not least, two things, I hate to end on a sour note, but I will. Unfortunately, the State Street Park has yet had more vandalism, this time the light-headed drinking bout was vandalized. And then the Simpson Park experienced vandalism on two consecutive nights, and so we just keep having our parks vandalized. And so I really encourage folks, if you see something, say something. Don't go to Facebook and post something, pick up the phone, text us, do something, because go to social media with your photos, it's too late. Our, our police have to be there, have to see them in the commission of a crime, you know, or we have to have video and things of that nature, and so again, be vigilant, if you see unusual activity at our parks, please, please, go ahead and call nine oh one, call the non-emergency, call whatever, it is an act of crime, so. With that, expecting Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Well, we'll go ahead and move on to item fourteen, which is committee report. I will look through, I'll talk to my house, I'm seeing if you have an update.
Well, yeah, we met end of July, last month, I believe, in July.
What, what we need?
Oh, I'm sorry, the county U R A, we take care of the North Bend, Bay, and the railroad bridge. So we have a project in the works of recreating the whole Trans-Pacific Highway. They're looking at, you know, the intersection and the dive and fixing the, what do you call it, the overflow of water, the drainage problem is on, it's all in the scope of this. We met, and then because of the rail bridge that is inoperable, I asked to have that looked at and see if the county U R A would be willing to kick in some funds to get the train rolling again. And there's talk of that, and we'll see what happens out of that, but I feel it's very important for the current economy of the area and the future economy that the trains still roll through North Bend and Goose Bay.
Yep.
Yeah, all right. Okay. That's only committee report, so we'll go ahead and move on to council comments. And councillor Jones, start with you. No?
You do have the committee report.
I do have one more committee report?
Yeah.
I do.
Charter review.
Oh, okay, we have one more committee report, and that is the charter review committee. That one you need?
Or, well, you watched the meeting, we just got there, but it's probably one or the other, so.
Yeah, so I'll let the council know that the charter committee met. Councillor Slater was absent, and I was there, we had, and Jake Holder was able to attend. And can you help me out with the, who else was there? Was everybody there, or were the people, no, we had, we had Flo.
Flo was there.
And Mike? And what's that again?
Bill.
Bill Richardson and MJ Holder. You think that was?
Kate Horst.
And Kate. Good, so we had our first initial meeting, and kind of walked through like what the, you know, like how many people we thought they were going to be, like what the next steps are, and we ended up deciding that there are no like reason to really like rush anything, and so the, we, I don't think we actually, did we pick a date, we see it in September, I'm believing in?
Yes, September ten.
September ten, so that'll be our meeting. Everybody had their own, you know, they've received obviously the charter, they had received that before, and the next steps are, we're looking at, we have some really great information on best practices.
Yeah, we have summary.
Yeah, and so they're kind of studying that and making notes of anything else that they would like to see or address. But those, you know, some of the, we're not that far off really from where the best practices are, so we're kind of going to go through one by one in the next meeting, start that process, it's going to probably take several meetings, and then the goal would be to end up, you know, through reports of several meetings, comparing and contrasting where we're at with the, the best practices, see if there's any gaps or any recommendations, and then at some point, we'll be a recommendation to the council, so.
Go through November ballot, if we could, or?
The committee decided that that was just too fast, yeah, that there was really not the pressing that needed to make sure that we were going to be able to take it to the November ballot. And so.
I was looking forward to a May or November election next year.
Yeah, so that, you know, I guess, again, the end product will be a recommendation to this council, and then this council can decide if they want to take it to the voters to accept, to vote on amending the charter with any recommendations that would be made, that's what the committee finds. Yeah, so thank you for the reminder. Yeah. All right, so committee reports, council comments now, councillor Jones.
Yeah, so I was really, really happy that we got a second chance on our annex project and on the U R A discussions, I think. When our city administrator coordinated, got the money so that we can have a group training, I think that was really pivotal. I think the community came forward and spoke after the first board, when they turned that board over. It's, it's really important for everybody in this sea of change, for us to work together. The territorialism that we're accustomed to doesn't fit anymore, we're literally in the same place, we're literally in the same buckets of influence, and, and we need to work together, and so that, that's a huge step forward, and you know, hats off to the staff for the incredible running of making these proposals that you had to do multiple times, and hats off to people who participated and stepped up to the plate. So, we needed eight to be ready.
Councillor Hamilton.
I'll keep it short tonight. Thanks staff for all you've been doing and making things go into place, and I'm going to go from there.
Okay, right, councillor Schultz? No comments? No comments, okay. Councillor Slater? Larry's not here, so I said.
Well, I think we'd all agree with, with comments going on over there, the economic development, future planning and focus is the only way that we become the city we want to be, and staff's work and the fact that the public sort of rose up and helped out, that thing is really great. Glad to see that we've gotten far, and I look forward to the results which will be coming out of that. And other than that, oh, and I did watch the, the Turk committee video, which was sort of interesting. Okay, I'm sure glad that that's being written down here, so. Look forward, look forward to that on the town, to do it in person. One last little thing I just have to pick up. You know, let's get all the big things going the right way, but we talked about being a coast, coast guard city.
Yes.
With the concept that, you know, the air station has over a hundred and fifty people there, and the whole idea of a coast guard city is you're integrating those people with their community and putting it all together, and so it's very, very positive that way, so. Anyhow, just kind of copying that, here's sort of a backup, so if we can charge a hit with whatever's appropriate.
Great, thank you. No comment. All right, well, I have a couple of comments, and I'm going to start with my first by making a statement that as the mayor of North Bend, I do want to briefly address a former city council's letter to the editor that was posted in the local newspaper. And first of all, it is disappointing to see that many of these same allegations that, some of which are over two years old, are still being brought up by this councillor and rehashed. The city has previously reviewed these issues, either through legal review or through third-party investigation, which ultimately led to this former councillor's formal censure. And connected versions of the investigation report and other related documents are on the city's website, where residents can access that and read it for themselves. So I don't want to take time to rehash things from the past that have already been addressed, but it's disappointing to me that this is still out there, and when we have gone over and over these issues, and it's just, it's unfortunate that some people cannot move on. The city is currently in a great place, we saw that here tonight with the leadership that we have, our city manager and the staff. We're doing amazing things, and we have a very engaged city administrator led by Mr. Maliron here. He continues to serve our community with professionalism and integrity, and championed this, what we will see as a defining moment for the city of North Bend, with the housing project downtown North Bend. So I encourage everyone to look forward and focus on the positive things that the city can do in making North Bend one of the best places in the state, and once again, thank you to our staff for all their hard work, and to Mr. Maliron for the things that you do for the city.
Thank you.
So to the, to the rest of the council, I do, will just take. So to, to the rest of the council, um, I do, will just take just one more minute to say, I do believe that tonight is a historic night. Not just because my daughter's going to ASU tomorrow. But thank you for your quick comments for getting out of here, but it is a historic night, I, uh, ran for city council in two thousand and eighteen. So I'm coming up on, um, a total of eight years since I've been out talking to the public. The number one thing that I have talked about with people, when we have gone out. In just listening sessions or door-to-door, it has been housing. And you are a part of something that is moving our entire city forward. And so who knows where we'll all be in a couple of years and how exactly long that this project will take. But I really hope that you'll make a commitment to be there when those first individuals are moving into those new apartments. So we're doing really great things in North Bend and I appreciate all of your hard work and all of the staff's hard work. This, I'm looking at you over there, you're explaining, uh, something that's really complicated, um, that I thought very, very well. And to anybody who's listening tonight, if they want to learn more. Call the city, our finance director, our city manager, any of the, the council here who's happy to sit down. And go over with you and explain why your taxes were going to be a little bit lower. These are very hard things to kind of just have in thirty-second conversations, and I know that the staff is happy to take time to, to do that. Um, and you can go straight to our website, there's some great information there, we have training videos about U R A. And, uh, you're, you're going to see some continued great things in this community, and, um, with that said. I will, don't get too excited because I'm going to close this meeting and go into U R A, uh, but I've not seen any other business. So I will go ahead and adjourn our council meeting and then reopen our, uh, urban renewal meeting, so council meeting adjourned. Don't go anywhere. So.
I want to go back to council, but it was probably.
Yeah, okay. All right, hey. Good evening, well, the North Bend Urban Renewal Agency meeting, um, for, uh, August twelfth, twenty-twenty-five, seven thirty-one here in the council chambers. I'll go ahead and call this U R A meeting to order and ask for city reported helps with the local. Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Eaglekey.
Here.
Commissioner Schultz.
Present.
Commissioner Slater.
Still here.
Commissioner Torres.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, uh, number three on our agenda tonight is public comments, anybody for public comments, see if you?
There's none.
No public comment, that will take us to item four, um, is there a motion for number four, the approval of the U R A minutes from June twenty-four?
I move to approve the U R A minutes from June twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five.
I have a, um, first, um, from Councilor Schultz and a second from Councilor Slater, uh, no, Commissioner Slater, Commissioner Schultz. All in favor of the approval of the U R A minutes from June twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number five on the agenda is the authorization to establish the two hundred thousand dollar downtown code compliance revolving loan, loan fund using Main Street revitalization grant reimbursement. Is there a motion from the Houston? I move the city council, acting as the urban renewal agency, to authorize the creation of a downtown code compliance revolving loan refund. An amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars to be ceded by the reimbursement proceeds from the Bay Cleaners Main Street revitalization grant project. Okay.
Also.
And a first from Commissioner, um, Jones and a second from, um. Commissioner Hamilton. Any further discussion? All in favor for, um, to, uh, the motion?
Hold up one sec, yeah. I think this is a, a really excellent use of government funds and of taking, um. Benefits that we have that are not part of the tax base and turning it into, uh, another useful tool. Um, so this, this, this is exactly what governments are supposed to do to enhance the community with them.
Well said, I agree, thank you. So we had our first or a second, our discussion, um, all in favor for the city council to act as the urban renewal agency for authorizing the creation of a downtown code compliance revolving loan fund in the amount not to. Cease two hundred thousand dollars to be ceded by the reimbursement proceeds from the, there's Main Street revitalization grant project, we say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Number six was, um, action from executive sessions, there's none, number seven is the executive director's report, Mr. Maliron.
Yes, uh. For the benefit commissioners, uh, now that we have gone through every iterative, uh, process of the urban renewal agency plan. And the city council tonight, um, approved, uh, the substantial amendment. Uh, staff will be working on a communication that will be included in the utility mailers. And this is so that in September, this body can take the final steps. Which is then to close the circle, you authorized us to go to the process, work with all of the. Uh, fifteen-plus, uh, taxing authorities, um, get approval by seventy-five percent of the taxing districts. Um, and so then we'll have to close the circle with, um, another public hearing. Um, and the final communication piece to all of our utility customers, that'll occur. Uh, meanwhile, uh, our, uh, finance director, myself, um, will soon be going to Salem. We will be meeting with business organ for, uh, basically their funding roundtable. And that then gives us an opportunity, uh, to showcase this project. And look at any available under additional funding. Uh, for instance, one of the potential grants that, uh, is available is, uh, for, uh, green projects. Uh, which could potentially include a green rooftop for us. And so we're looking at how do we make this a very energy efficient, um, but. A project that we can be very proud of here on the South Coast. And so we'll continue to, uh, keep you updated, um, we, uh, uh. Are finalizing the last bit now of our T H U, four million dollar paperwork so that we can actually start drilling towards that. Um, that will then involve lining up, uh, art tech. Uh, architect and, uh, and then we will, uh, work on getting our final. Uh, state to start preservation or as we call it, ship-o clearance. Um, and then get to the point that once we have as built, uh, do our construction bids. And then, uh, hopefully, no less, uh, no more than eighteen months or less. Uh, we're going to try to see if other contractors that are currently on site in our community, um, uh, also competitively bid. And so they don't have to remodelize because we know that we, the contractors right here, so we're going to see how quickly we can move on this. Um, I may very well be bringing on some administrative staff to assist with that. Um, which I accounted for in the, um, four million dollar grant. Uh, as part of that process to take care of, um, things such as our architects and others. And so, um, uh, we'll be fast-tracking that and, um, uh, having a lot of public involvement, uh, and communication. Um, so that the overall design of the facility and the building, um, also beats, uh, the needs. It's very important, and I'll close out on this, that, um, although you've approved a, uh, public. Uh, building component to it, um, this body, this board has not defined the full project yet. That is something that staff will be bringing to you, um, there are several other wheels in motion. For instance, it could include, um, city hall offices in there, but it could also, uh, include event space in there. It could also include, you know, the first floor daycare facility, um, or join other cooperative efforts with the school district. Um, and so that is not fully vetted out yet. Um, and so now that, um, we're in our final throes, um, by September, we should be having, um. Some pretty deep level conversations with some of our partners, uh, defer to this, uh, project and then make it happen, so, thank you.
Good, very quick question. Uh, how does ship-o get in this?
Because it's contributing and it's a historic building and it contributes to the historic district, well, I understand. Are we?
Are we a district?
Um, we, we actually, anywhere in the state where you have, and yes, you have your main street program and you actually have. A historic.
Okay.
Uh, commission.
By certified local.
Yes, by local government.
Okay.
Yeah, CLG.
So I understand how that fits in that, I was thinking like the annex, we're just taking it out, so.
Yeah, I wish it was that easy, but, you know, we have to go through, uh, the process with them. And then we have to, yeah, go and do a final environmental assessment study, um. Thank you.
Okay. See if you also can get agenda to go to the panel. Okay, all right, big round of applause. Congratulations and media adjourned.